Twenty twenty one, the Port of Olympia is working diligently to address the threat posed by COVID nineteen to Thurston County and the state of Washington in the United States. On March sixteen twenty twenty, the commission adopted Resolution twenty twenty dash oh three, authorizing certain emergency powers in light of the COVID nineteen outbreak, including invoking applicable emergency exemptions to the meeting notice requirements and location restrictions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Pursuant to Resolution twenty twenty dash oh three, the Port of Olympia Commission will conduct today's meeting, excuse me, is conducting today's meeting remotely. The port is following the guidance from Thurston County Health Department to take all efforts to prevent the spread of the virus and is acting in the interest of safety and welfare of the public, the community, and our employees to limit its spread. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve today's agenda.
I think Commissioner Downing is moving to approve. Commissioner McGregor.
Yeah, I did, sorry.
Okay, so it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners, we have an agenda and the first item is the twenty twenty one legislative agenda. And our own Sam Gibney will be leading the discussion, Sam.
Thank you Commissioners, and I want to introduce a couple of folks that I have with me here today. The first is Jenny Folia Jones, as you well know Jenny, she has stepped into her new role, which is Senior Manager of Communications, Marketing and Government Affairs. And so Jenny in her new role has been assisting with this effort that will be describing the legislative agenda both for Thurston County and for our own efforts. So she's stepped right in January fourth and you know, hit the ground running. I also have Mr. Chuck Fowler of the South Sound Maritime Heritage Society, and Paris McCloskey from the Puget Sound Estuarium, and they'll have a few words to say at the end of our presentation. Okay, next slide. So as the commission is aware, but to remind you, the port takes part in the Thurston County Shared Legislative Agenda. This is an informal partnership amongst the administrators of the various jurisdictions throughout Thurston County that include the cities, including the city of Yum, Thurston County, the port, the Thurston Regional Planning Council, Thurston County Economic Development Council, the South Puget Sound Community College, and Thurston County Chamber of Commerce. So every year and a couple of times throughout the year, this group meets and we talk about various legislative items that we might be sharing in common and what we might want to work on together for the upcoming legislative session. Next slide. The criteria for a project or an issue to be considered for the shared legislative agenda is that it be exclusive and unique only to the Thurston County region. That also results in benefits to more than a single member entity. So if you're just going for a project that really just benefits yourself, there's nothing wrong with that for, and oftentimes other partners will support that, but we won't promote it as part of the shared legislative agenda. That demonstrates a commitment to member cooperation, collaboration, and then not supplant individual member request. So this process has been taking place for a few years now, I think we're seeing some real success, and it's a way for us to coordinate our efforts amongst the entities and across the county. Next slide. So for this year, as we got together, and again, we met a couple of times about what requests might be coming forward, and typically we get you know, some short descriptions of what people are thinking, what how, what the reach is of the, and the impact is might be across the county. These ones, four ones kind of bubble to the top. And the first is a request for beverage quality laboratory equipment and instrumentation for the Tom Water Craft District. If the commission will recall last year that the, the port was able to ask it, serve as the fiscal agent for a request for other equipment, and the legislator has been very supportive of the, this region's efforts to try to revive the craft brewing economy here in Thurston County. So that request is in. The second is a funding for Habitat Conservation Plan implementation by the City of Tom Water. And this effort is really to try to put some seed money or a bank into whatever the mitigation strategy and the mitigation banking efforts might be in that come out of the Habitat Conservation Plan. So this is being led by City of Tom Water. Of course, as you know, we are partners with them on the Habitat Conservation Plan and have a real interest in the efficacy of that, that plan and strategy, but, but this request is being carried by the City of Tom Water. The third, and I just sent a, the commission a link about this project and it's funding for I five planning and congestion strategies with a specific emphasis on the Nusqually Delta and the bridge there, but it really covers a wider stretch of I five. This is the, the first step in the planning and environmental review of that. I think the editorial in the Olympian this weekend was in strong support of this. And so again, all of this has a regional benefit, the port and others would benefit from it. And so you know, we have, we've stepped up and you know, included this in this overall strategy. And then the last, but certainly not least, and really what I have found to be very exciting the last couple of weeks is funding to help construct a regional marine center at the Port of Olympia. And I have some details to share with you, but this is our effort and it was really born out of both the, what we've been hearing through the destination waterfront planning efforts, which is that the community really wants to see the, the mix of development on, on the peninsula be a kind of a, to be a mix of both commercial enterprises as well as, as really community and mission driven enterprises. And so in thinking about this and talking with the partners on the legislative agenda, we decided to put together a request to help fund the building that would house both the port administrative offices, the port marina office, but also have space available for some mission driven nonprofits. And so in thinking about that, reached out to the Puget Sound Estuarium, and we have Paris McCloskey here today, and he has a few words to say here in a moment. The Estuarium is really been thinking about their future for quite some time now and has done a planning, definitely the, the farthest along of a lot of the nonprofits and, and interested parties that are looking for potential a home on the peninsula, had a pretty good idea of what they were needing. Were thinking about putting together a legislative capital budget request themselves, and we decided to join forces. And we're super excited about the idea that we could potentially be sharing space and proximity to each other with our administrative offices and marina office, and then having another nonprofit presence that would be open to, to the public and have a variety of uses, and I'll let Paris describe those here in a moment. But so really fitting in with what we're hearing from, from the community, but also I think adding to the overall development that's been happening in our, in our area with the Hands-on Children's Museum, the Lot Wet Science Center, we think that this is a real compliment to those. We think that also from my understanding of, from speaking with both Lot and Hands-on Children's Museum, that their, their programs really help to advance some of the diversity, equity, inclusion goals that the legislature is putting a great emphasis on. They serve a wide swath of, of children throughout, throughout the year and have some, some real demographics and numbers to back that up. So we think it, it fits in well with that kind of overall in a brand that is developing and programs that are developing. We also think that it can serve as the anchor of, of, in a catalyst for us kicking off our development on the, on the peninsula. And it fits in with the South Sound Maritime Heritage Society's goal of building the Maritime Heritage Walk and having interpretation and things along the way that to really help celebrate our maritime heritage path. We've done some outreach already, we have quite a few partners that are excited about this, this option and are working on letters of support for us. They include the, the two entities that, that are represented here today, as well as the Squawks Island Tribe, the Hands-on Children's Museum, the City of Olympia, we've coordinated with them. And so we're, we're really excited about taking this, this forward. We're asking for two point five million dollars that would help to complete the building. We don't have, some of the details worked out, but we do, but we do have some, and so I'm going to ask Aspen to switch over to the one pager. Can bring that up? It coming up? Here we go, great. So this is a conceptual drawing that we had done, and if to orient yourself, you were looking south here on the peninsula, the kind of, kind of four pointed building is the existing bathroom facility. To a little bit further to the south would be where the existing marina office is. So it's right in that area of, of in kind of in between the, the larger bathroom and where the existing marina office is. We have not settled on any, any type of actual design, we need to go through that, that process here and the, should we be awarded the, the money and regardless of whether we're awarded the money, we have to go through a design process for both the aesthetics as well as the function of the building. We are looking at having some multiple use areas in the building, be it some shared classroom space, some shared public meeting space, et cetera. But we do have a fairly good idea of, you know, kind of the, the size of the building, but it's not set in stone right now. If you'll scroll down a little bit. Go on to the next page, yeah, stop there at the aerial. So again, just to orient you where we're thinking this would go. The ask is for again, two point five, we're expecting the, the building to come in somewhere in the neighborhood of six million dollars with all of the site improvements that, that need to be done as well. However, we do not have a firm engineering estimate on that. So please expect that number to change as we proceed with, with design, I will keep the, the commission apprised of it. And, and know that, that as we proceed with, with the design, we're not really talking about, you know, changing the footprint much of what we were thinking about anyhow. It's just previously that we were thinking that we would design a building and it would have several thousand square feet of space available for, for rent to some type of a commercial enterprise. Should we be able to get these funds from the legislator? This will allow us the opportunity to then negotiate with Estuarium and perhaps some other entities to be able to not have a completely free place for them to be, and I think I've been clear with that, but definitely something that would be much more affordable and within, within their range. So you know, should we, should we receive the, some type of award from the legislators, we definitely want to make sure that the nonprofits see benefit from that as well as to see some benefit to the port for lowering our, our cost for our structure. With that, I'm going to turn it over first to Paris and see if he has any things he'd like to add, and then we're absolutely open for questions from the commission.
Yeah, so I'm, thanks very much, Sam, for introducing me, I'm Paris McCloskey, Executive Director of Puget Sound Estuarium. And for those of you who haven't heard of us or don't, aren't familiar with us, we are an environmental nonprofit that is dedicated to educating the local South Sound communities in Pierce, Thurston, and Mason Counties primarily, but also Kitsap, Jefferson, and others on estuarine ecology and basically the ecology in our backyard here in the South Sound. And through education, we, our mission is to educate in order to encourage stewardship of the South Sound ecosystem. So it's been a really great process being involved with the Destination Waterfront Advisory Committee Group and also subcommittee of our interested stakeholders, nonprofit stakeholders. We've had a great dialogue, you know, I've, I've had a great dialogue with Sam and Chuck Fowler here for the last month or so regarding this project and our place in it, and you know, eventually we put forth a proposal to Sam and Sam came back to us with the idea of partnering on this marine center building in, you know, with the port and Puget Sound Estuarium and South Sound Maritime Heritage Association. So we're really excited about doing that partnership. We are, as Sam alluded to, we're in a position where we, our programs are bursting at the seams with the facility that we currently have. It's like a twelve hundred square foot facility, and we serve about six thousand, about sixty five hundred students per year with our programs. And we generally get over three, three thousand visitors in a normal year, which this year hasn't been. We've been closed for about six months of this, of twenty twenty, so, but in a, in a normal year anyways. And our community reach is with, between like our online community reach and our in-person community reach is about fifty five thousand people, community members in the South Sound area and beyond a year, so. And we see ourselves expanding quite a bit, but we really have capacity needs in order to do that, we're definitely bursting at the seams in our facility right now. So we see this as a great opportunity to be able to, you know, have a state of the art marine center facility in the South Sound area that specializes in the ecosystem in which we live, it's a very unique ecosystem as you all know. So we're excited about the possibility of really showcasing that and doing a lot of great education work. And I know the port is involved in some mitigation projects and some water quality things, and we also would like to partner with the port and showcase those things as well. So that's a little bit about us and our partnership here with the port, where our board is very excited. We're looking forward to moving forward with this plan. And yeah, we're, we're, it's, it's, it looks like a great plan and a good partnership, so we're really looking, really looking forward to it.
Thank you, Paris. And then I will turn to Mr. Chuck Fowler, who I think most of the commission knows. I would tell you, it's been just a delight to get to know Mr. Fowler over the, the past couple of years and to share his passion for maritime history and to really look at the, the joy that he carries, the banner of maritime history in this community with. So Chuck, why don't you give, talk with the commission about some of your vision and how you see this fitting in?
Sure, thanks a lot, Sam. First of all, I want to, like Paris did, commend the commission for approving the Destination Waterfront Development Plan process. It's been a pleasure to be involved in it. I'm on the advisory group, and of course, I'm, we're one of the stakeholders with South Sound Maritime Heritage Association. South Sound Maritime Heritage has been around for forty five years, and as most of you know, we put on Olympia Harbor Days for that period of time, which is developed as to, as one of Puget Sound's most popular and favorite maritime festivals, the festival itself and the tugboat races. And, and so we've been doing that for some time. So it was great to come and be involved to have commission and Sam announce the Destination Waterfront Development Effort and be involved in it. Because I think for too long in this community, each of the nonprofit organizations related to marine and maritime activity have been kind of on their own, and we've been each doing our own thing and haven't been coordinated. And that's, that's been a great need in this community for, for some time. So we appreciate the commission and the staff, and then the outside consultant, Thomas Architectural Studio, and all of the, all of the individuals involved, they've been a pleasure to, to work with. One of the things that South Sound Maritime has gone through through the years, people have asked us, well, you put on this great festival and you've gotten, you attract a lot of people, you're a part of our tourism development, you put heads in beds, you put people in restaurants, and you contribute to the economic development of the area. But we haven't, and then people have asked us the follow-up question, well, why don't you have a maritime museum? That's a, some kind of a corollary to the question of why doesn't Olympia have a museum period, a city museum? Well, we've taken a look at that and a real maritime museum, I went to the Olympia Roundtable Group several years ago and talked about. They asked me about that, and when I gave them the figure as to what a maritime museum, a really good maritime museum for a city of our size would cost, the jaws dropped and the discussion got realistic very fast. So I think now, South Sound Maritime, our vision is to not have a big, huge facility for a separate maritime museum. Because the Olympia Arts and Heritage Alliance is developing a downtown arts and heritage center in the old fire station. So it's logical to say, why don't we just partner with them and we'll have maritime heritage, history exhibits and artifacts and interpretation and great historic photos in their building. So we're going to do that, we're going to use their facilities and cooperate with them to provide that. We can do the same thing with the port. The Marine Center can be both yes, for marine science and all of that, but it can also be for marine history. A good example of that, I think, is the Port of Everett. When they built their new administration building, they have wonderful interpretation of not only the port's history, but Everett's history. So that kind of thing can be done in the Marine Center building. Over the years, we have lots of photos, we have lots of interpretive material, we have lots of artifacts. And so once you get to planning, we can be partners in that activity. So then we'll have a downtown presence, we'll have a presence on the port peninsula. And so I think that is the secret to the future development of, of our marine resources and sites and locations. Cooperation, not competition among, among us nonprofits. So it's been a pleasure to work with Paris, and we've talked to Patty Belmonte, and we've talked to Lisa Dennis Perez at the WET Center and all of that, so we're all in tune as to what, what we need. I think another example is in Port Townsend. Now Port Townsend has Northwest Maritime Center, one of the premier locations for boat building and for on-water activities and all of that. But Port Townsend also has a marine science center, that's separate. One at Point Hudson and one at, at the location of Fort Worthen. And so it just makes sense in a city like Olympia to put those together. And so we can build and, and work off of each other, and I think it's better when we come together and provide a great opportunity for not only the community, for education, for, and for tourism development, residents, and then people who come to see Olympia. So we're very excited about this opportunity and we're all in to work with the port, to plan it. And again, this kind of cooperation hasn't happened elsewhere in Puget Sound. So we have an opportunity to do it here. The other thing is that I've mentioned before to you, Olympia is part of the new Maritime Washington National Heritage Area. And that is a planning process that's going ahead right now to format and organize it. It's going to take the rest of this year, and then once that is approved by the National Park Service, the money will start flowing from Congress to support this, probably about three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year. But that is going to give us national and international visibility on websites, on maps, on the guidebooks and all kinds of things. And again, it's going to drive people to Olympia, it's going to drive people to the Port of Olympia's Destination Waterfront Development sites, and I think it's going to benefit all of us. So by leveraging each other's resources, again, cooperate instead of compete, we can do fantastic things, and what's going to happen here in Olympia? We are going to be a microcosm of maritime history and heritage, a working waterfront, and you'll be able to, people coming here and residents will be able to experience that as part of, as part of the whole activity. So thanks.
Great, thank, thank you, Mr. Fowler. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission might have about either our, our project or to the extent that I can answer about other things on the Thurston County Shared Legislative Agenda as well.
Thank you, Sam and Chuck and Paris for your comments on this topic. I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners to either comment on what you've heard now, or if you have a question or two. Commissioner Zeta, can you guys hear me? Anybody?
Sorry, I just have a hard time unmuting because I got two buttons to, I don't know which one's been pushed, so, all this technology. So in any event, I'm excited to hear about it. I would like to have that brochure, Sam, that you showed, sent to us, so it provides some good background. And I think I've been, and you can, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, and sometimes I am. But in fifteen years on this commission, I don't think the port has ever, that I can remember, gone to ask for money at the state level for something like this, any kind of a development in our community, and I think that's exciting. I think the two things that Chuck's group and Paris's group brings that they didn't talk about is their ability to also lobby to our state representatives, because they have a lot of strength there, and I think they, they will listen to them as well. And I think anytime we can put our, our collective heads together, we have a better chance of, of moving this thing forward. And I think the, if I'm not mistaken, the Puget Sound Estuarium used to be in the Washington Street Building there, but it was a real small, tiny space, and they outgrew that very quickly. And so it's good to hear your organization is being successful and growing. That's always a very positive thing, and, and the, the amount of kids that are coming through there, and hopefully it will increase once we get past always having to zoom each other. And, but the other thing was, is that two point five million going to be enough? I know you said half a million this by NIM and two million the next by million. And so that makes two point five million. So is that going to provide the design feasibility, all those permitting, all those things that are going to go into putting something together? And I don't know, Commissioner Zeta's got six raised, I don't know if that's a.
That's what we heard, six.
Oh, six, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, I only heard two point five, so I feel better at six, and hopefully we can get it all. And let's see, what was the other thing? Should, you know, we have the port day coming up here through WPPA, and is this an opportunity for the commissioners also to start lobbying our representatives up there when we meet with them and, and greet with them to start helping them along to a decision that they could get it into the budget, because I think that's exciting. This community can really use something like this down on the waterfront or just in the, in the community itself. So I'm excited, thank you so much, and I appreciate all your efforts.
Great, thank you, if I can follow up with a couple of things. Indeed, the two point five would not be enough for the entirety of the development. And again, we don't quite have a engineer's estimate on, on it yet, but the six million dollars is our, you know, educated guess on it. We do have five hundred thousand dollars in to finalize the construction plans and to move us, move us forward and in the first year, and then two million dollars for actual, towards the construction. We are expecting that the construction would take general fund dollars from, from the port, and that's been part of our plan to build the administrative and marina offices. uh, plan to, uh, build the, uh, administrative and marina, uh, offices, um, as, as we move along with that. So we are, uh, are expecting that, that as well. Um, uh, regarding, uh, meeting with legislators, um, Jenny, I will ask you to, uh, jump in here. Do you want to talk? We, we have also, um, hired a lobbyist to, uh, to help us with this effort. And you want to talk about, um, Anthony and some of your efforts and, um, some of the, uh, folks that we'll be meeting with, I think even starting tomorrow.
Sure. Thank you. Um, Jenny Polia Jones, Communications, Marketing and Governmental Affairs Senior Manager. Um, yes, we have been working with Anthony Hempstead. He's lobbyist that we have hired. Uh, he has been um, helping guide us through this process. As Commissioner McGregor stated, we haven't done this in, that I know of in the 20, almost 23 years that I've been here. Um, and so yes, this is the first time that we've gone on a, a state level ask. So he's helping us, uh, through this process, especially because the process has changed a bit this year even. So, um, we're, we're thankful for his guidance in that. But I have scheduled, um, meetings with some of our delegation. Same as correct, starting tomorrow, we are meeting with, um, Senator Hunt, Representative Dolan. Uh, Representative Bateman is unable to attend, but her legal assistant will be present for that one. We also have, uh, meetings scheduled for Wednesday and Friday with, um, Representative uh, Varno, I think. How do you say his name? I might be mispronouncing that. And then also, uh, Meek Ewan is scheduled and I'm waiting to hear back from some others. We're trying to get on their schedule for this week. Um, and so we, we are, um, hopeful that we can, can meet with everybody this week. I know their schedules are pretty tight. If not early next week, submittal is due on the 19th. So we are on a very, uh, tight timeline to get this completed and, uh, meet with everybody. Um, and then, uh, uh, Wilcox has also been spoken to already. Anthony had a meeting with him. Um, and so we're kind of, whenever we can get time with them, um, whoever can speak to them, um, we are, we're making sure that that's happening. So, um, is that all you had, Sam, that you wanted from me on that? Okay. So yes.
I, I would just like to
And we're, we're moving forward.
Okay. I'd just like to let you know that if, if there's something you need from this commissioner, I'd be willing to help out in any way I can because I, I'm excited to see this happen and, and super excited to see us work with nonprofits and the Heritage Association and to bring this all together is just a, uh, a great move for our community.
Sam. Sam.
Thank you.
Joe.
Yes. Come here. Uh, one, one second. Let me recognize Commissioner Zeta, Chuck, and then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Downing. I appreciate you doing the round robin. Um, so I'm glad to hear about this from port staff. Tribal representatives have been asking me about this for weeks and I have learned more from them about it than I have from port staff until now. So it's good to know. Commissioner McGregor is right. Port Commissioners can serve as lobbyists to the state legislature. We have been recruited by the W P P A to participate in Port Day, which is tomorrow. And the W P P A has set up meetings for us um, in order to advance the Wash, the state port agenda. And when staff does advance planning with your own commissioners, we can serve as resources for this type of thing too. So Paris, the Puget Sound Estuaryum is a great program. Um, and it would be great for us to partner with community organizations like yours, especially, uh, for serving students and getting them excited about marine science and ecosystems and environmental science. In order to make it safe for kids to explore their interest in our marine ecosystem, one of the things we really need is clean water and clean sediment. So I will strongly encourage port staff to also make requests of the legislature to move the port in that direction. I know Matka funds are always tight, but this is one of our primary responsibilities to our community is to make our marine ecosystem accessible for recreation, for learning, for, for other opportunities, maybe even for fishing someday. So if we, we have a duty to help clean up the water, clean up the sediment and have a healthier Puget Sound ecosystem. So I hope that we will take steps in that direction. Uh, Chuck, it's exciting. There's a lot going on with maritime heritage in this community. And Sam, I trust that you're in contact with Stacy Waterman-Hoy at the South Sound Arts Carried Culture and Heritage public facilities. Chuck, it sounds like you're partnering with them. I'm not quite sure how this two facilities thing works out. But I trust those details will work out and this will be complimentary and not redundant. Uh, and finally, um, I'm wondering about the marina staff. The marina staff have been limping along with a troubled building for several years now, and we really want to have them in a safe, new building. We owe it to our good marina staff and we owe it to the public who use the marina building. And I understand it takes time to build a fancy new building, but, um, I hope that our marina staff and the public won't have to wait too long for, for a, a, a safe building.
Uh, Chuck, did you have a follow-on comment?
Yeah, I think we can really help the port with its lobbying activity. Uh, ever since the end of the state centennial in 1989, we have had a legislative heritage caucus, and that is all of the arts groups and all of the heritage groups uh, in the state. And we come together at every legislative session at, uh, the ungodly hour of seven o'clock on Wednesday mornings. And we have, uh, co-chairs, Senator Jim Honeyford and, uh, Representative, uh, hello, Sam, help me. What?
Theringer.
Yeah, Steve Theringer. Uh, and, uh, they are the co-chairs and each of us get to present a what we're in all involved in, what our organizations are doing and what our legislative agenda is at each, um, each of our meetings. Well, it just so happens that Chris Moore of the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation, who is the coordinating agency for the heritage area. And then, uh, there'll, there'll be two presentations. Chris will make in the overview presentation of what this is all about and what they're asking legislature for. And then I'll be coming on and Chris wants to use us, our, um, tugboat heritage walk Parthea Sandman as the example of a local program that will be an attraction of the maritime heritage area. So I invite all three commissioners and the staff to come to that meeting uh, and, uh, see our PowerPoint presentation and how we're going to integrate that. But as you can imagine, after 30 years of meeting with the Legislative Heritage Caucus, we have, uh, uh, quite a good network of, uh, of, uh, uh, connections with the legislators. So we can certainly help you in your effort with your program as well.
Thank you. Well, uh, I think my two fellow commissioners, uh, made a lot of positive comments about this. And so I'll just be brief and just say that, you know, I like that partnership between, uh, Squawks and the Hands on Children, City of Olympia, the Estuaryum and the South Sound Maritime Heritage Organization. And I really, uh, it's, it's a little bit, if you will, poetic that the city of Olympia is involved. And because after all, 100 years ago, when the port was founded, you know, this was a, uh, transportation hub, if you will. So the city and the heritage is based on transportation and it includes the city of Olympia. And then you fast forward 100 years. And now we're still living here. We have a different emphasis and we care about our environment. We're trying to do great things and that's where the Estuaryum fits in. So I think there's a good, uh, you know, nexus of, uh, of, uh, you know, interest and abilities and, uh, we could build something great both for the city and, you know, it just so happens that it might be on portland, which is great, but really it's for the, uh, the whole area. So I think you're right in your, you're the right wheelhouse in terms of asking the ledge for a contribution to this. And, uh, it'll be fun to see the, uh, enthusiasm continue to build for this. Yeah. So. Okay. I think, well, we have, uh, any, any final comments or are we ready to move on to our next work session topic? And, and thank you, uh, uh, Paris McCloskey and Chuck Fowler for attending with us and, and putting some, uh, flesh on the bones, so to speak.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Chuck and, and Paris. I'll just make a, a couple, um, comments to wrap up here. And, um, indeed that, um, for tomorrow, for, for Port Day, um, staff will be attending the, uh, general sessions that W P P A has, has put together. We do have some, um, um, meetings that we, we've just been able to, to firm up. And so, uh, we had asked, uh, Commissioner Downing as president of the um, commission to, uh, join us at, at those. So, um, we definitely be, uh, employing the commission there. And then as we get things scheduled, um, we'll reach out to the, the other two commissioners and see if we can, um, have you join us if your, um, calendars, uh, uh, allow for that. And I would love to, to have you, uh, participate. Um, Paris and Chuck, I, I will follow up with you too, to see if you'd like to join us in, on, on, on some of those calls. And we'll certainly join you at that, that breakfast. And, you know, the, I, I've been there a couple of times with, uh, with you now, and now I get to do it at 7:30 in my living room. So so, a slight advantage to it. Um, but you know, thi- this has come together, uh, really very quickly. And, um, I, I just want to um, thank both Estuaryum and South Sound Maritime Heritage Society for being uh, really so open to, to, to working with us, uh, pulling something together and then watching the kind of the excitement, uh, grow from it. And I think that this is just, um, uh, is a, a forecast of, of what we can do together here and, and helping to, to build connection to the water and, uh, access and, um, celebrating our, our heritage on, um, many different fronts and really serving a diverse community. So um, thank you two very, very much. And, uh, commissioners, we will certainly be, be in, uh, touch and get you scheduled to uh, join us in some of the, and, and it's all remote this year. So we, we all get to do another Zoom session and, but I've, I've heard it's actually makes for, um, you get a little bit more time with the legislators because they're not going to physically moving from one meeting to the next. Great.
Thanks.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thanks, guys. Okay. We're going to go ahead and move to our next, uh, work session topic.
Yep. And, and we just have, we just had the one topic for today and then our upcoming topics and agenda items. Uh, recognizing that the commission is going to be in retreat with staff for, uh, two afternoons this week. So we decided to keep the, um, this, the, uh, the schedule fairly light on, on this meeting. So if we move to the next slide. For our, uh, next regular business meeting on February 8th, we have the aviation planning group contract. This is uh, regarding the airport master plan. Services for the consultant for that. And then our on-call environmental, it, uh, is the environmental, uh, group that supports the Cascade Pole, uh, monitoring and, uh, management. And then we have tentatively scheduled, um, Mr. David Trout. If you'll recall, he was not able to attend um, uh, last, uh, last week with us. Uh, he was out ill. We've, uh, we've not been able to confirm, uh, with him yet, but we hope that he will be able to join us on the eighth. If not, we'll find another date. Next slide, oh, the 15th. Um, we'll have, uh, the 15th, um, set aside for really doing a, a, a touch base with the, the commission on where we're at with the destination uh, waterfront. And, um, we'll have the results in for the, uh, second, uh, survey as well as we will have been able to incorporate, uh, the folks that we've been able to reach. And it's one of the things I, I wanted to um, talk with the commission about is we have sent out invitations to all the additional, um, uh, members uh, that the commission identified and we've not heard from everyone. Uh, we will, um, certainly, um, uh, follow up individually, uh, uh, with you. Um, we've, you know, we've gotten their contact, um, information. We've tried to reach out in a couple of different ways, but if there's some ways that you can, uh, for, for those folks that you really wanted to have participate in the advisory group. If there's another way that we can contact or if you can reach out to them, uh, we want to make sure that they, they, um, realize they have been invited and, uh, can plan accordingly.
Oh, by the way, excuse me, uh, one second. I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, Sam, would you like to clarify the date? On Monday, February 15th, uh, that actually is President's Day. So.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that should be changed to, uh, Tuesday, the 16th. Um, yeah, because that, that, that is a holiday.
Okay, well, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much for, for catching that. Um, we'll also then be, um, having, uh, Jerry Sevier, uh, come and discuss the scope of work uh, for the Economic Benefit Study. That's, I, been identified in the, uh, non-operations budget as a, uh, commission special project. And so she'll, I want to review the, the scope of work before she puts out the request for proposals on that, on that. Next slide. And on the 22nd, we'll have that aviation planning group contract coming back for your action as well as the, um, on-call environmental and, um, that, uh, and then a, uh, open order earthworks contract, um, that, that, as always, these are a, um, uh, working document that may, may or may not be ready for, uh, for that meeting. Um, but we're, we're keeping it in as a placeholder. And then on to list of topics. Again, this is the, uh, list of topics that I, um, I keep, uh, running. The broadband initiative is, um, you know, we'll probably be, uh, shifting that to, uh, work with, uh, the POCAC. Eventually I would imagine the, the, the commission will want to have some type of a joint session or, or something, uh, um, uh, with the POCAC, given their findings. Um, definitely want to come back to the Capital Lake to Shoots Estuary. We want to at some point discuss the Harbor Patrol on water support. The Commission Code of Conduct and Ethics Resolution is kind of hanging out there from the 2020 retreat. And then, uh, request from Commissioner McGregor on contracting process, West Bay Yard. Um, I have, uh, reached out on that. They are not available until, till April, uh, for that. Um, the Parthea Project Update, I'll get Mr. Fowler back for it. And then the POCAC Rules Resolution. And again, that will, um, that, that is some of the work that the commission has assigned to, um, to the POCAC for this year. Um, there were two other, uh, uh, issues that we have rolled into our retreat to, to handle about the, um, the meeting minutes process. And so we'll be, uh, covering that at the retreat here in the next couple of days.
Also, I'd like to stop right here and ask, uh, come, you know, I think that it's important since when a work session, Sam, to for the commissioners to jump in if they see something that catches their eye or what have you. So I will just say that the, I can understand the broadband initiative now that we've given, uh, some, uh, the POCAC to, uh, begin the research on that. I understand the timing of that. And then I think the Capital Lake, the Shoots Estuary proposed funding structure. Is that not, you know, a little bit out of our hands because we're waiting for that executive work group to come up with something and bring it back to the port. Is that true?
In, in, indeed, they, um, they, they did have something ready to go and then heard from, um, a lot of the, um, the members and participants in that. And so they're, they're readjusting. I do expect them to put out some type of a draft here. Probably in the next couple of months. It's not going to be immediate. Um, so that, we're probably again looking into, uh, Q2 before something. Um, uh, and, and then what I would be bringing back is, um, uh, what the proposal is for a funding structure to then get the, uh, commission, uh, read on that.
Okay. And my last comment, I, sorry to monopolize, monopolize the microphone, but on the Harbor Patrol and on-water response, I'd like to see that my personal interest is to, uh, you know, get that one rolling because we're moving into soon, uh, the springtime, uh, more boating. And I understand that the, uh, system needs some refinement. So I'd be looking forward to that presentation. Any, anything else, uh, commissioners? I don't want to, you know, see if you want to weigh in on anything.
Commissioner Zeta has her hand up. I'll let her go first.
Um, Sam, I think you said something about the, um, the economic analysis. I'm not seeing it in the packet. Maybe that's changed. Where, where was that on our schedule? About planning for that? Can we look at that if it's, if it's on one of these?
It's on, it's on for the 16th.
Okay. Can we look at that, please?
For me?
Okay. So that, if that was on the packet, I guess I didn't see it. That's great. That's great. The, it's going to be on. I would strongly suggest that we hear from Dr. Martin on this. He's the expert. He did our study the last time. And he can help us. He's the expert. He did our study the last time, and he can help us with this.
So at, at, at this point where we're planning is just to, to really understand what the, the scope of work is that the commission wishes to have. And if we are hoping to have somebody potentially bid on the, on the process, it would be advisable not to have them discuss the scope of work with the, with the commission.
So this agenda is for a scope of work.
Yes.
And so in that case, I would recommend that that be on the agenda, scope of work. And also that we review the testimony that Dr. Martin gave five or six years ago. No, four or five years ago, when he presented our last Economic Benefit Study, when he did give us recommendations on the scope of work for this. So if staff could provide a link to the meeting when that happened, I would be happy to do the legwork and review that. But we should take advantage of the expert feedback we got at that time. And then there's one other agenda item that Commissioners agreed on a week or two ago. We agreed in principle that we support the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. We gave that task to review the plan and our own greenhouse gas emissions analysis to the POCAC. And we talked about the process, just started talking about the process of signing an MOU or an inter-local agreement. I think staff are the experts on drafting MOUs and ILAs. And that would be something that would, I'd really like to see come back to the commission here sometime soon on one of these meetings.
So I'm, I guess I'm a bit confused then as to certainly what, the, the, a staff and legal counsel would work on an ILA. And what I, I guess, I would assume that you'd want the, the POCAC to finish some of their work first and then, and then have that be brought, brought back to the commission.
I think the commission is agreed that we would like to support the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan based on our conversations at recent meetings, at recent public meetings. And to that end, it would be useful to see a draft MOU or ILA. We do not need the POCAC to do their analysis of the TCNP and our greenhouse gas emissions. Before that, that's going to take a long time, but we should still be able to sign on and support. Fellow Commissioners, did I understand correctly that you, that our commission does support the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and would like to sign on with an MOU or an ILA?
Well, let me, let me chime in here. I remember us having discussion at the POCAC as this being one of the projects now. One of the assessment, I mean, the ILA is something more of a legal document that our legal people could put together and bring forward for us. The plan is what the plan is. It's being accepted countywide at the other agencies. So I think that maybe what the POCAC might be looking into, and it might be a change from what we had originally talked about, was how that could be implemented within the port structure. And so, but that, that's a little bit different change than what I thought we had asked them to address. But I'm fine with it. I just think that an ILA is a legal document. And there are ones out there, but I think the POCAC could then evaluate how to implement and what to implement within the port structure as part of their report back. But I, I don't think we need to wait for them to complete something in six months because by then we're going to be way behind the eight ball with the other agencies. So I would agree with that. The other thing I'd like to talk about a little bit is.
But Commissioner McGregor, can I just respond to the first topic before we change topics? Again, I mean, I think all three of us think that it's important for the port to support the Thurston Climate, Climate Mitigation Plan. But at the same time, we gave project to the POCAC, which was in part to, you know, investigate the ILA. So I mean, what I'd like to see happen, because the POCAC has not come back to us, they haven't even had a meeting yet. They're going to have a meeting and they're going to put more definition around these three projects that we've suggested. You know, what they're going to do for us and how long it's going to take. Because we asked them in two sentences, two or three sentences, what each project was, and they're going to flesh that out and say so-and-so is going to work on this, and here's how long it's going to take. And now we have Sam attending, our executive director, attending those meetings and helping interpret, you know, what it is the commission's asking them. So, you know, I think that, you know, I don't want to alienate the POCAC. Like, we're going to go ahead and do our thing even after we gave them a project. So at the very least, I'd like to wait till after that first meeting with the POCAC. And then Sam can personally say to them, you know, the port is anxious to get on the bandwagon with the ILA. And, and, you know, so you see what I'm saying? So we can finesse this a little bit. I'm in no way wanting, I mean, I, I believe that we should, you know, get the ILA going. But, you know, I don't want it to be in conflict with what we talked, the POCAC, about just a week or 10 days ago. Zeta?
I agree with my fellow commissioners that there's no reason we shouldn't be able to get the ILA going. That's a job for staff and/or legal. And the POCAC has a more substantial task ahead of them to evaluate exactly how the port can contribute to the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And an ILA done by the staff and/or legal will help set a foundation for moving forward in directions that the POCAC will suggest.
Okay, can, can I make one more comment? Not on this, but moving on. Can I do this?
Thank you.
The other thing I'd like to see is, you know, at the retreat, is there a time that we can have discussion on the unassigned topics so that we can get those kind of implanted on a date? And the reason I bring that up is today was kind of a light work session. We could have incorporated maybe one. And there may be other light work sessions coming on that we can say, we'd really like to do this one first. And hopefully all three of us can, can, can agree on a priority of which ones we'd like to see happen. And, and, and then get that established at the retreat. So you have some, some information on which to start working at, working them. You and the, and the chair can start working them into our work sessions and/or our regularly scheduled commission meetings. So I would suggest that that might be a subject matter for our retreat, 10 minutes. It shouldn't take long for us to decide on how, how busy we are at each of the meetings. But if we're going to get together, we might as well do our 2:30 to 4:00 or 4:30, whatever it is, and say, let's get some work done. So anyway, that's my suggestion.
That sounds great, Commissioner McGregor, because those were all on the assigned list because we didn't have time before, but we sure do now.
Um, certainly I will relay that to the facilitator and we'll add that to the agenda. What I'm, we'll kind of put them in a priority order. I, I will say that we are lacking some capacity at the staff level. So we definitely need to be mindful of that of, you know, while we have work session time, we may not be able to have the, the staff time to be dedicated to prepare some things. But we'll work that out, out in the scheduling. It would, it would be good to know from the commission kind of in, in what priority order you would like to address things. With that, we don't have anything else for the commission?
Oh, you got through all your slides? Okay, very good. All right. Good, another good meeting. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll let Commissioner Zeta do the motion. I'll second it.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn and see you the after tomorrow, no later than at the retreat. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. It's 12:30 meeting, right?
Yes.
Brown bag?
Yes, in your, in your own kitchen.
Yeah. Thank you. Bye.
Right.